Good evening. I call the May 21st, 2024 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland II Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve the agenda for the May 21st, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Agostini?
It is correct.
All right, Board members, please vote. The vote is five yes, two not present. The motion passes. I should point out that Mrs. Nash and Mrs. McFadden have not joined us yet. We will now move to item 3.1, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Washington.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, parent grievance, student admission requests into the district's adult ed program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations and certified releases, contractual matter regarding food service and personnel matter to the superintendent's evaluation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? All right, let's, well, let's do this if we're going to hand vote. The motion has been made to move into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, employment recommendations, certified releases and what else was on the motion, Ms. Washington? Student admissions into the district's adult ed. Breach of contract and contractual matter regarding food services and personal matter regarding superintendent's evaluation. A motion has been made and seconded. Board members, last hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Did we have parent grievance in there? Okay, I wanted to make sure the second time around. All right, thank you.
Okay, I didn't add, I didn't say the, also, let's add the parent grievance to that list. All right, Board members, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the vote is unanimous. We are now, we will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to end the executive session?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we adjourn executive session at 6:40 and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash to end executive session at 6:40. Is there, and resume public session. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, I realize it says we've already voted, but other than that, is the motion correct on the screen?
Oh, it's still not present. It has a
Oh, okay, okay, not present. There we go. That's hand vote. All those in favor of ending executive session, please raise your right hand. All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move on to our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Dr. Elkin Scott will introduce tonight's guest.
Good evening, everyone. It is my esteemed privilege to introduce Dr. Whitney Prowl from Sand Lapper Elementary School, who will come before us, and her newly developed chorus. We're so excited to have Dr. Prowl with us. She's one of those leaders that I like to say that's very innovative, transparent, visible, and someone who has such an amazing relationship with her teachers, her students and her parents. So it's such an honor to have you stand before us because I don't think we've seen you since you've taken over about, what, two years ago as the principal of Sand Lapper. So I want to say thank you and thank you to the parents who are here with these wonderful students, leaders. So I will turn it over now to Dr. Whitney Prowl.
Thank you, and good evening to our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Kim Moore, our distinguished school board members and all guests viewing this Richland District II School Board Meeting. My name is Dr. Whitney Prowl, and I serve as the proud, proud principal of Sand Lapper Elementary School. When the honorable Dr. Monica Elkin Scott asked us to provide an inspirational moment, I could think of nothing more inspirational than a first-year teacher and our students. In Richland II, we are purpose-driven, future-ready, so at this time, let's allow our future world leaders to lead. And with that, I will turn it over to a member of our superstar chorus, which is led by our first-year teacher, Mrs. Shakina Fryson, who took the initiative to work after the school day ends in order to provide chorus as an opportunity for our students. Please give a warm welcome to Sand Lapper Student Body President, Ms. Braylin Roper.
My name is Braylin Roper, and I am the Student Body President at Sand Lapper and a member of the Sand Lapper chorus. When I fresh joined chorus, I did not really know how to sing. I just knew I enjoyed singing. Although I thought I sounded like Beyonce, I knew I needed a little bit more practice. Throughout the year, while participating in chorus, I learned more about music, specifically how to read music and what actual music notation looks like. I also experienced the change and development in my voice. I learned how to sing properly and with more structure. I enjoyed all the fun times we had with Ms. Fryson. When we learned our music and fixed our mistakes, it would make her happy. In turn, it made me and everyone else in chorus happy. I could not wait to join a musical ensemble later on in my school career because Ms. Fryson helped me find my voice and made learning music fun. So I don't quite sound like Beyonce anymore. Now I sound like Braylin, and I'm just fine with that. Thank you all, and I hope you enjoy our performance of "Spring, Spring, Spring" by Teresa Jennings, arranged by Paul Jennings. This piece means a lot to me because it fits my voice well. It's a beautiful upbeat piece that gives me lots of energy and leaves me pumped up and happy. I hope you all share the same appreciation for this piece whenever we perform it. Thank you so much, and I hope you enjoy our performance.
Thank you, Braylin. The Sand Lapper chorus.
And for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may now be seated.
Thank you, guys, so very much, students and parents.
Yes, thank you. That, that was, that was very lively. It was very good. The agenda item in this next section is a recognition of state and national award recipients within our district. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, we're at that point in the year where we are celebrating lots of wonderful things with graduation coming up and transitions from elementary to middle and middle to high school. But tonight, we're here to celebrate some of our outstanding team members as a part of our Richland II family. So, Mr. Trichetta, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board members, Dr. Moore. Our theme tonight is excellence, and we are surrounded by excellence. We begin tonight with, where we should always begin, with our student academic success stories. We have two Richland Institute students who have won $2,500 National Merit Scholarships. They've risen to the top of a talent pool of 15,000 finalists to be named 2024 National Merit Scholarship winners. They are Blithwood High School senior Eva Pendleton and Spring Valley High School senior Ava Phelps, who will each get a $2,500 scholarship. These scholars were selected by a committee of college admissions officers and high school counselors who appraised a substantial amount of information submitted by both finalists and their high schools. Over 1.3 million initially entered by taking the PSAT, so they are in rare company. It's quite an honor and an accomplishment. Ava's not able to be with us because Blithwood's having their academic honors tonight, but Ava Phelps is with us. Ava, come on up. Board members, sorry. Are you ready? Three, two, one. Perfect. About another round of applause for Ava. All right, staying at Spring Valley High School, we have another Spring Valley High School senior who earned a top Congressional Award. For more than a decade, 18-year-old Harmony Frederick has worked tirelessly to improve her community and make life just a little better for those less fortunate. The Congressional Award National Board of Directors recently informed her she has earned their gold medal. The gold medal is Congress's highest honor for youth, and Frederick will receive it at the Summer Congressional Olympics. To receive gold status, a student must excel in all three categories: academics, community service, and physical fitness, and attend cultural events. She previously earned the lower levels of the award, including bronze and silver. Harmony, you won them all. At an early age, she was inspired to help others when she saw the outpouring of love and support her family received when her mother was diagnosed with breast cancer and her father with leukemia. She and her older brother Anthony spent many hours working lemonade stands in various locations to raise money for cancer awareness. She also had volunteered in retirement and healthcare homes for senior citizens, collecting coats for children, and held summer cleanouts where she collected items for fostered children. Ladies and gentlemen, your bronze, silver, and gold Congressional Medal winner. Mom, you can come up if you want to take a picture, too. All right. We now move from students to some award-winning office professionals. Jennifer Hedrick, our very talented secretary at Blithwood High School, was recognized for being named the South Carolina Association of Education Office Professionals, or SCAOP, Office Professional of the Year for 2024. They're coming quick today. And last week, she received even more great news. Jennifer was also selected as the National Association of Education Office Professionals, Office Professional of the Year for 2024, or NAOP. Good crowd today. Jennifer, I'm going to brag on you a little more before we take the picture, though. She served on both the local and state associations and has won multiple state and national awards as website coordinator as well. So, thank you for everything you do for Blithwood High School. One more picture. Beautiful. But we have far more office professionals to introduce you to tonight. They are all recently appointed or elected to serve on state and national boards, and when you hear this list, it's truly impressive. The mission of the South Carolina Association of Educational Office Professionals, SCAOP, is to raise the standards of educational office professionals through education, recognition, and networking. Tonight, we're recognizing those who are recently installed as executive board members, and we have four of them. Shandell Zimmerin is vice president. She is the student data coordinator in Registrar Killian Elementary School. April Turner is the annual conference co-chair, and she's a bookkeeper at Spring Valley High School. April's also April has also served as SCAOP Presidential Aid and Community Service chairperson. Sorry, I'm slacking. Get in there. There you go. April, your turn. Principal Jeff Timoney, a busy man tonight. Perfect. Our next person, Georgia Council, Presidential Advisor. If you don't know Georgia, she serves as the executive assistant to the superintendent here in the district office. Georgia was the 2015-16 SCAOP president and also served as SCAOP Secretary, Historian, and Parliamentarian. You really haven't done it all. And last, but certainly not least, Sandra Baker, Treasurer. She serves as the administrative assistant to the principal at R2Y2 in our Student Innovation Center across the hall. Sandra has also served as SCAOP Secretary and as a Presidential Aid. And now we move to the National Association of Education Office Professionals, or NAOP, board members, because we've got a bunch of them, too. NAOP, the mission of this association is to provide professional growth through leadership education, achievement, recognition, and networking. NAOP is the only association providing a national designation specifically for education office professionals. This designation is akin to the National Board Certification for Teachers and requires a portfolio of information and documentation to earn the designation Certified Educational Office Employee. I didn't read it to you, but many of the people we've already seen have earned that certification. Richland II has the largest number of certified education office employees in the state of South Carolina and has had four National Office Professionals of the Year, two National Educational Administrators of the Year, as well as two national presidents and several national board members. Tonight, we're going to recognize those who were recently installed to the NAOP 2425 Board of Directors. We have three. First up, Mary Beth Gauris, Southeast Area Director. You may know Mary Beth as the student data coordinator at Lake Carolina Upright. She was the 2021 Richland County, South Carolina, and National Office Professional of the Year as well. Are you ready? Beautiful. Next up is Lori Cannon. Short walk, Lori. Lori is the Elementary Education Chairman. She's the administrative assistant to the principal at Lake Carolina Lower. Perfect. And last, but not least, you've already met her once tonight, Jennifer Hedrick. She's the 2024 Olive Tea Ritchie Educational Office Professional of the Year. She's a student data coordinator at Blithwood High School. Perfect, thank you. Our next guest of honor is Kimberly Fleischer. She's a Richland II school social worker, and she received the Southeastern Behavioral School Clinician of the Year Award after being nominated by her assistant principal, Dr. Tia Jones. Dr. Jones states, "Ms. Fleischer has seamlessly integrated into the Catawba Trail and Richland II culture, forming meaningful partnerships, relationships, and fostering an environment of support and compassion were truly inspiring. Her active participation in the multi-tiered support system of support team, her use of innovative approaches to enhance students' mental health, and her outstanding professionalism have set of benchmarks for excellence in school-based mental health services." And that's about the best she can say. Before we get to our 40-year honorees, we have one woman who couldn't make it tonight, but I feel compelled to tell her story. Catherine Campbell from Dent Metal. She's Southeastern Regional Art Educator of the Year and Southeastern Region Middle Level Art Educator of the Year for 2024. Not only did she win these, and she also completed the NAEA School for Arts Leader Program as a member of her 2023 cohort. She went to Minneapolis on April 4th to receive the awards. And as a teacher, what did she do? She taught a class while she was there. So congratulations, Catherine Campbell. Now, our final act tonight is the honor of time and dedication. We're going to start a new tradition of honoring our 40-year anniversary employees. We talk a lot about longevity and retention education, but tonight, we're going to honor the amazing commitment of 10 Richland II employees who have all served this district for more than 40 years. As I call your name, please come forward. We have a brand-new 40-year employee award we'd like to give you tonight. Our first one, Melody Cook McDuffie, 45 years. Melody's on vacation. She couldn't make it. I'm sorry. I know I should have started with somebody else. Our second 40-year employee is Lisa Dawkins, teacher from Sand Lapper Elementary, 40 years. Hold it still, ladies. Thank you. For our next honoree, 42 years in a school system is an amazing career, but 42 years of teaching first grade? Sainthood. Ladies and gentlemen, Lisa Lightner, CFK South. Three, two, one. Here we go. Our next honoree, from the silent service that we call transportation. There you go. With 41 years of service, Shaloya Smith. Three, two, one. Beautiful. Our next honoree is not here, but I'm going to read her name anyways. Audrey Andreski, 45 years. Our next honoree, Donna Martin, District Accounting Office Specialist, 46 years. Thank you. Our next honoree, Nancy Gregory, Chief Academic Officer, 44 years. Our next honoree, Nancy Gregory, Chief Academic Officer, 44 years. Yeah, they light up. Eight different colors, if you wondered. But you've got to turn it off the rest of the meeting. Our next honoree, Susan McCarthy, Windsor Elementary, 40 years. Three, two, one. Our next honoree is not here, but I'm going to ask Robert to come up and accept it on her behalf. Teresa Wilson, Bus Driver. She's here? Oh, what a surprise, 46 years. Teresa, come on down. And our final honoree for the evening, Nancy Diggs, Kellyan Elementary School Teacher, About a final round of applause for all our 40-year employees. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Turcetta. Board members, are there any comments? I would just like to say congratulations to all the people that receive honors here tonight, especially y'all who have driven school buses for so long. Wow. That's a lot of patience. All right, we'll now move to Item 6.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda for the May 21st, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, the second by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, is that correct on the screen? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move on to Item 7.1, Public Participation. Four individuals have signed up to address the board. You will each be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I will remind you that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive or vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to a staff member for response at a later time. Our first speaker tonight will be Shedrick Garland.
Good to speak with you tonight. This happens to be my second time speaking to you all this year, so we consider it as family now. As a matter of fact, I will see you more often as classified teams from each school organized to be more engaged with our school board. Tonight, I am also joined by our extended family of classified professionals. Please stand. I use the word "family" because here in Richland School District 2, when we win, we win together. When we lose, we lose together, whether in life or in our beloved school system. I want to say thank you to Dr. Campbell and Mr. Foster regarding their findings and recommendations for consistent and equitable compensation. Pay. The compensation study began in October 2021. What is the current status as of May 2024? Would you all be willing to provide a solid timeframe in which the increases will take place? As the cost of living continues to rise, our pay has not. Consider a household of two to four persons with hardships of life, with an income of $12 to $17 per hour, having to pay for children, food, rent, insurance, medical bills, cars, and still needing a second or third job to obtain the basic necessities of life. The bonuses and longevity checks are greatly appreciated, but to be honest, we need equitable salaries now. Did you know that a number of our classified professionals are required to perform their daily primary duties while fulfilling roles like teachers, grading papers, adhering to curriculums, preparing lesson plans, inputting grades, overseeing split classrooms, and other capacities without additional compensation like our teachers? Safety. As you know, we live in times now where our schools have been equipped with protective walls and bulletproof glass. Classified professionals still sit behind those walls, welcoming every sane or insane personality that enters our schools. Classified professionals are on the front line. We are the first that you see when our parents and students enter every day. The climate of the school is shaped from the front doors. These beloved classified professionals keep parents, students, and staff from being targets of abuse. Funding. While funding new stadiums, gyms, and classrooms is great, we need you to choose staff over structure. In order to fully staff the structures that are being founded by taxpayers, we must compensate professionals to man our schools. What is the fastest way to get there? Moratoriums? Bond referendums? A penny tax, perhaps? You choose. I will leave you with this final question. Have you ever thought about what the schools would look like without us, the hands, feet, and hearts of the front line? Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Parrish Anna. Okay, in my defense, it is listed backwards on my page.
Good evening. As I listened to the presentation on zones and enrollment on May 7th, I noticed a discrepancy between numbers in certain schools having a significantly lower percentage of utilization. I am referencing Column 5, Page 7 of the Davis Report entitled "Open Enrollment: ES Attendance Matrix." There are schools like Bookman Road, Conder, Heels, and Lake Carolina Upper, which are between 70% to 80% capacity, while there are other schools which are over 100% capacity, such as Pontiac, Rice Creek, and Sandlapper. As shown in the presentation, housing developments continue to emerge, so we can expect that we will continue to see growth. In that presentation, I heard mention of the need to begin looking at attendance lines in the future. In support of this, as an educator, I believe that this needs to happen as soon as possible. As a simple analogy, if someone is planning a picnic and sees that a thunderstorm is coming, they can make the choice to either proceed with the picnic or take precautions. One of those choices is proactive, while the other will result in being reactive at a later time. Outcomes will be very different depending on the level of proactivity. As an educator, I already see the impact of overcrowding and the need for prompt attention and action with the administration collaborating with the school board to begin the process of adjusting attendance lines and addressing issues relating to zoning within our district. It is my belief that the sooner you begin working on these needs, the better our future outcomes will be. This will serve to prevent issues in the future rather than having to react to crises related to overcrowding. Adjusting attendance lines and zones will also save money that would otherwise be needed for renovations or new schools. If attendance lines remain unchanged, the hard truth is that renovations may or may not be effective in ensuring that schools are not overcrowded. I also bring up the issue of equity. If schools are overcrowded, the quality of education for our students will be affected. It is my belief that students at all Title I schools should be given the same opportunities as students in schools which have more affluent communities. I encourage you, in cooperation and collaboration with the Richland 2 administration, to begin addressing the discrepancies in school utilization and to begin implementing a plan to address overcrowding issues that are occurring or are expected in the future based on current housing development data. Addressing and adjusting attendance lines is critical, and response is needed. I am cognizant that there are many factors and challenges, but I continue to remain optimistic that as this board has achieved in the past, by being proactive now, future crises can be averted. If we operate out of awareness and responsiveness, we will all experience success. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kristin McGuire. All right, our final speaker will be David. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I had to take the long way. Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Kristin McGuire. I've been a teacher in Richland 2 for 10 years, as well as a parent of three students, all of which had the iconic Ms. Wilson. I'm so grateful for her. And I'm here tonight to ask you to support the proposed policy change of the SIC Bank. My interest in this issue is born out of a friend and colleague that is currently going through cancer treatments. In the course of her treatments, she has lost all of her sick and personal time due to her focus on beating this insidious disease. Upon discovery that she wasn't eligible for the SIC Bank, we contacted Human Resources to see if she had any options. While there weren't any options available to her at the time, the leadership in Human Resources said that they would consider revising the SIC Policy Bank to allow more people to become eligible for those benefits. I would like to encourage the board to adopt the proposed policy in hopes that the expanded access to the SIC Bank will allow people in need to access help in their most desperate of times. Currently, Richland 2 is not competitive when it comes to salaries or bonuses compared to many neighboring districts. This means we must be competitive in culture, supportive teachers, and our working conditions. No longer are we just competing against other districts to retain employees, we're competing against other industries. Many of these industries have compassionate policies towards those who are facing long-term illnesses with flexible working conditions and more generous policies. For example, my husband, who works at the university, was allowed to donate sick time directly to colleagues who were experiencing complications due to their pregnancies. As of yesterday, there were approximately 168 teaching vacancies across this district. Yes, we are trying to retain teachers in the district, but we are also trying not to lose them to other local employers. Adopting these proposed changes to the SIC Bank policy is a step in the right direction, and I appreciate the changes that have been made to make the SIC Bank more eligible and accessible to those in need. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Our last speaker will be David Oberle.
Okay, hello, everybody. Much to my wife's chagrin, I'm here again. Much to her joy, I won't be here anymore after this. But we have been a part of this district since 1978, counting this school year, and Oberle has taught in this district for 50 years. So maybe we'll get one of those light-up things. But, you know, we're leaving to go to a different district, we're moving away and everything, and I just want to leave with a few more kind of comments about things I maybe could be done. First, I'd like to echo what we just said about the bank, because my wife was in what you call bedrest when she was pregnant, and wasn't able to use anything like that. And we were eating beans and rice for a while because she had no sick leave for that, so I'd like to echo that comment. I would like for there to be some way for teachers to feel more at ease to speak with administration about things that go on. I won't violate a policy that you mentioned here, but I will say that it's pretty bad when your daughter doesn't want to go to school in the morning, not because kids don't like school, because she doesn't want to go to school. There's things that go on she doesn't want to be at. So hopefully you will listen to the voice of teachers, not just teachers, but also staff, students as well, to see things that are going on, that can be done better. The disson policy, I don't know how much that's looked at, everything, but, you know, get into weeds, go visit the schools, see what's going on, talk to people privately. That's where you're going to get the honest answers. They're not going to come here and speak because they know they'll fear that something might happen to them if they speak out in public. But I think they're more apt to speak in private. But, you know, my dad was probably the first teacher that was a state teacher finalist for this district, for the state. And he left because he couldn't deal with the rules and everything, the policies, which are not the district's control, but being told how you're going to teach math. He didn't believe in that. So things that you can change, please look at changing and making better for teachers. It's not always the pay. In fact, I ask my wife a lot of times, what's her problems? It's rarely the pay. It's support. When you move up from a teaching assistant to a teacher, and you're told by your principal, "I don't think you're ready yet," that's not good. That's not a good leader right there. So just please do something to talk to these teachers and see what's going on. If it has to be private, but please listen to them, because they have a lot of good things to say, but not willing to come up here and speak in public, because again, they're feared what might happen to them with their jobs. But I wish y'all well, I really do. I was a proud graduate of this district. I graduated 1989 in Spring Valley, and I owe my job to this district for the education I got here, but it's time for us to move on. But thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to voting on executive session items. Item 8.1, Student Appeals. May I please have a motion regarding the student appeal?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Nash.
I move to deny the appeal for student number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Ms. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Porter.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students numbers one through three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Ms. Porter, is that correct on the screen?
That's correct.
All right, board members, please vote. Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the breach of contracts?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Nash.
I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding the professional employee number one who breached their employment contract with the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one no. The motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington.
I move to accept the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, is that correct on the screen? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We'll now move on to section nine, unfinished business or action requested. 9.1 is our legislative update. The agenda item in this section is a legislative update from the SCEA President, Sherri East. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Ms. East, President East, to come up. She's going to give the board the legislative update, and she is representing the South Carolina Education Association.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Dr. Moore, Mr. Trapp, board members, and people in the audience, thank you for allowing me a few moments tonight to speak to you. My name is Sherri East, and I'm a high school science teacher. I taught in the Rock Hill School District, but I'm currently serving as the SCEA President. The SCA is a professional organization that represents all school employees. We -- a lot of people think that we're only for the teachers, but we're not. As you've heard me of your classified folks, thank you for all you do today and always for our children. We also have administrators and other school personnel in our organization. Just a little brief history of us. The SCA was formed in 1967 as a merger between the PEA, the Palmetto Education Association, and the SCA. So one was the Black Association, the PEA, and the White Association, the SCA. So many times people ask, "Why are we THE SCA?" And "THE SCA" was our merger language in 1967. And also, if you try to find us anywhere and forget the "the," it doesn't take you to our information. So I like to always tell people, be sure to use the "the." And we also keep our triangles there because we are a three-tiered organization. We are local, state, and national. So you have representation at the local level with your Richland County Education Association, and thank you to our members that are here tonight. You have state representation, which is myself, who tries my best to represent us at the State House, and we do have a national association in DC. So that's just a little bit about who we are. And then the goal for me today is to give you a legislative overview, and I really -- my legislative overview really is more of things that are hot topics and what has been of interest to our educators and should be of interest to you as school board members as well. So I'm not going to go into a deep dive, just kind of a little bit of kind of how things ended two weeks ago. And if you have any questions, I'll stand for those or refer you to the proper place to get you more information. So on May 9th, regular session ended, kind of, but they did agree to continue on a limited basis until November 10th. So they still have some unsettled business, unfinished business. One of most important to all of us is probably the budget. So they have not approved the budget, so therefore it makes your job a little harder to do your budget because you're contingent on their budget. So there is a conference committee made up of six members, three from the House and three from the Senate, is Senator Peeler, Senator Setzler, Senator Bennett. And in the House side, it's Mr. Manister, Philip Lowe, and Stavernakis. So those six people are hashing it out right now to decide how they're going to divvy up all the money, not just for schools, which is their, you know, priority, but to every agency in the state. So some things we have heard, but I want to stress to you, have heard, because again, the budget is pending at the state level, is there will increase the base minimum scale from 42.5 to 47, but I believe your district's already at or above the 47 minimum. But for the eight districts before, that's quite a movement for them in the past few years from the base minimum scale. There's also movement from step 23 to 28 for the state to fund that. I would like to bring everyone's attention to that. Sounds really good, and we're excited about that, but it's not uniform movement within those steps. So some steps, when I looked at it, there's a $100 step increase some years, there's 1,300 some years, there's 3,800 some years. I asked why, and I was not given an answer on why the discrepancies amongst the steps within the state minimum schedule. Now, you may have evened that up with your own step schedule, but within the state base minimum, it's kind of all over the board right now. So, and I don't have a reason why. We have also, there are different versions of the House and Senate funding this increase that they, of course, all say, "We're giving them all the money they need," but I'm sure you might tell me a different story. So we hope that they will fund. We are not fans of unfunded mandates to our school districts, so we always ask for more money for you to be able to implement all the things they're asking you to do. So we're just kind of a wait-and-see on the budget. We have heard that it may be done as early as July. Other reports say it will take a little longer, but they are coming back soon. What you call soon. Some things that are also of interest are budget provisos, and sometimes there are many of those, and they kind of get slipped in. I mean, that's just how they do business. And one of interest to our members, we've gotten a lot of calls about lately, is the cellphone policy, is that they're trying to do a statewide ban on cellphones and what that looks like with funding. So I would imagine as districts across the state get news of that, they're going to have to come up with their own cellphone policies or however, whatever you want to do with that. Some districts already have that in place. Some schools do it school by school, but that is something that's in there in the budget proviso. Also, the curriculum, that if any student feels uncomfortable with the curriculum that is being taught, that they can go ask that teacher to not teach that. That's a carryover proviso. That's been in there for several years, and it's still there. It has not went away. So I would encourage you in your spare time to go read all the budget provisos that deal with education, to see if there's anything of interest for your district. Another note, along with budgets, and something we've done, is the voucher lawsuit or education scholarships, we call them vouchers, that did pass, and that is supposed to start now. They've been taking applications for that. Our organization, along with the NAACP and the -- have filed a lawsuit at the State Supreme Court that was heard in March. We are still waiting to hear a ruling on that at this time, and that may or may not affect this year, next year. As I said, we're still waiting to hear about the voucher lawsuit. The other thing that was, this was the head-shaker last week when they ended. It's the State Board Regulation 43170, which turned into Document 5269. You're like, "What is she talking about?" And actually, we, it's the classroom materials, classroom and library materials, language that's out there. And because it was introduced by the State Board as a regulation, the House and Senate were supposed to hear it. It was supposed to get a hearing and move forward. It never did, but there seems to be a rule that says after 120 days of introduction, if neither the House or Senate acts, it automatically goes into effect. So that's where they left things last or two weeks ago. So neither House heard that, and so it now goes into effect, which will be June of this year. I would say probably districts should look at that and see how they're going to roll that out. We've received numerous calls from teachers asking, "Can I teach this book? Am I supposed to rearrange my curriculum? What am I supposed to do? I teach AP English." So it may, it's one of those, you may want to take a look at that and see how you are going to implement. I call it Regulation 43170 or Document 5269. We nicknamed it the Book Banning Bill. I'm sure you want to call it that, but that's what we are calling it. So the other thing of interest that was a hot topic was the transgender bill. We didn't get into the medical part of that bill, but we did get into the teacher part of that bill, or actually all school employees. Now there is a duty to report for educators, not just teachers, but any school employee who knowingly withholds information from a parent. You're not supposed to do that anymore around sexual identity. That's something very new, and we don't know how that's going to play out either. Teachers are asking, "What do I do with that?" We have several members that are also sponsors of groups and clubs that sometimes children do express different personalities in those groups and ask, "What am I supposed to do with this? Can I be -- like, what are the consequences here? What are the consequences to a district?" Administrators are asking, counselors are asking. So you may want to take a look at H4624 and see what and how you are going to handle that as a school district. The other one that was a hot topic for a couple of years now, but it's stuck in a conference committee, was called H3728. That's called Transparency in Education. It also got nicknamed the CRT Bill, and in that, it's been stuck in conference committee since the end of last session. And if you, I don't know if you know this or not, but this is the end of a two-year cycle. So anything that did not pass at this point fell to the floor or it died unless it made it across both sides of the aisle. But this is one that's been in conference committee for a while, and there are six people on that conference committee. And there at the very end, the last two weeks, they kept having hearings. They would schedule them, then they would cancel them. They would schedule them, they would cancel them, schedule them and cancel them. We have heard that they're going to come back and deal with this, but we have not been given any kind of a schedule to when that may happen. That would just be another something to put on your radar. It was very hotly debated the year before, but a lot of it carried over into the 43170. So that would just be something to keep your eye on. We have changed the Read to Succeed to Letters Training or the Science of Reading. We have talked to teachers that have implemented the Letters Training, and they do like that. They think it's effective. However, there's big concern over being compensated to get that training and be certified in letters. So we do ask that you be mindful of how you put the teachers through the training. We have also heard from administrators that, I think the state says you need to do kindergarten through third grade. We have heard from a lot of elementary principals or administrators that they want to train their fourth and fifth graders as well, teachers, because if you're a fourth-grade teacher, then you need to get moved down to second grade or vice versa. Or if a child, let's say you have a struggling reader at third grade, but then they go to fourth grade, but your fourth and fifth-grade teachers haven't been trained in the same methods as your first, second, and third-grade teachers. So it made sense to us to train all of your elementary folks at one time, but there's a price tag attached to that, I guess, so they weren't willing to, you know, fund. But some districts are, and some principals have told me they're taking their discretionary money because they feel it's that important to make sure everybody's trained on the same methods of how we're going to teach reading. So that would just be another consideration that we have had some calls about. And that's all I really have. I mean, that's a from-the-top look of things. I mean, things got really complicated over there, especially that last week when the regulation's going to go into effect without any passage from the House or the Senate. So there's a way that they can pull that back and deal with it, but I'm not sure there's the will to pull that back and deal with it. So I think we probably should all brace for in June that's going to take effect, and how's that going to look for your district, our district, and across our state. And I would just say, in the end, you know, we should all be doing what's best for children. And if we have that at the front and foremost of all we do, then everything else should fall into play. And it's always been our belief that when you take care of the adults in the building, they should take care of your children. So if you're taking, you know, let it all trickle down. But we should always be mindful of how's this going to affect a child. So I'll stand for any questions, if you have any, and thank you for your service on the board. I know that's a, people think that's an easy job, but as I have learned from teacher to this role, it is not an easy job being on any board, and we appreciate you and your time and your relationship you have with us, and we hope to continue and further and foster that relationship in the future.
Thank you, Ms. East. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Trapp.
Dr. Elkin Scott.
Ms. East, do you have anything to leave with us, that you can leave with us, or you didn't bring anything with you?
No, I didn't bring anything with me, but I can bring it back. I can get information to you. And, you know, we have a website that's lovely, and we also have encouraged people to share out legislative updates so your employees can see those on your website. Perhaps put any professional association's legislative updates so your employees have access to information, and that way they can keep up with the news. And I'll have a shameless plug in here. Hope you will invite me back. You know, this is an election year, and we really do need people out voting in June and in November. And so we get beat up a lot on that teachers and educators don't vote. So you can go a long way in helping make sure that your folks don't have that fear. I heard the gentleman before talk about the teachers often are afraid, and so sometimes they feel like they're not allowed to vote. I mean, we absolutely don't want people politicking at school, but voting should be encouraged by everybody.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Augustine.
Thanks so much for your presentation and giving us the updates. Now, this question that I'm very curious about the, and this may be speculation on your part, or you may not even want to answer this, but the library bill that just sat there for 120 days, I'm curious, do you think it was intentional, or it really just didn't get brought up? Or you can say, "I care not to answer."
Well, I would prefer not to answer, but that's not usually what I do. After talking to a lot of the experts that were over there that day, it truly seems that it was a, "Oops, we didn't realize this is how this would work." However, there is a way to fix it, and if they wanted to, they could. So whether or not it was intentional or accidental, or it is an election year and funny things happen during election years, there is an opportunity for it to get the debate I feel it deserves if they want to. So we will see. They're not done yet. I think there were some people that were trying to work on that. I'm not sure that it would change. It may still pass, but at least it would have went through the process of the House and the Senate hearing it, debating it, and amending it maybe. You know, we had some amendments in there that we would have liked to have had heard that, you know, that is gone now. So whether, I don't know. But the experts say it was truly like nobody realized this was going to happen if they didn't do a certain thing, but it will just automatically, the 120-day mark started, I think in March, and so June is your day. So, but I think more importantly is what is that going to look like for you as board members to come up with policies to make sure you're following that? And for educators who are very nervous, I mean, teachers like to plan over the summer. They like to know if they're going to teach a novel. They like to know if they have to pack up certain books or redo things, or if every video I show needs to be in my -- you know, it's just that unknowing part, I think, that makes everyone nervous. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is an update regarding the 2024-25 budget. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So during our last budget conversation, we were asked to go back and relook our budget that we presented, to come together and come up with a plan that we presented, to come together and come up with a plan, and to take in consideration some of the items that board members identified as priority items to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our teachers and our staff members as well as our students. And so tonight, Ms. Williams, our Senior Chief Financial Officer, will be presenting a new plan for the budget.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Moore. I stand before you to give you a brief budget update that incorporates some of the things that Dr. Moore just mentioned. Okay? So I initially draw your attention to the priorities that we kept in mind as we developed this budget. These priorities come from a combination of the surveyed responses from the board as well as staff issues that address working conditions and provide support to our schools. So I included this slide in the presentation, which is our proposal for the teacher salary schedule for FY '25. It includes, you know, the starting salary for a teacher with zero years of experience and a bachelor's degree to begin at $50,000. My current salary scale starts at $44,321. We received several questions from educators, especially before the May 10 contract deadline in regards to this salary schedule, but of course, we instructed them that everything, of course, would be contingent upon approval by the board. Okay, super small. Again, you've seen this slide before, but all this does is attempt to explain that the increases, of course, they vary by years of experience and degree. They're not consistent, much like Ms. East said, with the state minimum salary schedule, that the increases vary. And so you'll see, again, because we're increasing the starting from $44,321 to $50,000, that's a $5,600 increase. And then depending upon where you land with degree and years of experience, that increase would change. But again, you can clearly see on this the decrease in steps from 45 years to 35 years. So this budget, of course, takes into consideration $22.1 million in increased revenue over fiscal year '24, which, of course, is a combination of revenue from state sources and local sources. Again, I will remind you every time I put this slide up that these numbers are still estimates because we're waiting on final projections from the state and the county auditor. This was based upon the House version of the budget. We're hopeful that this is the budget that ultimately prevails out of conference committee. And then information as provided by the State Board of Economic Advisers yesterday, where they put, you know, they now have an additional $140 million in general fund revenue for the state budget. We're hopeful that that means more money, or $30 million will be included in the state aided classrooms appropriation for school districts. Now, the update that I bring you tonight incorporates the use of fund balance in the fiscal, in the fiscal year '25 budget. While this is not ideal or highly recommended, nor is it in accordance with GFOA, GFOA best practices, we are educating a population of students right now with unprecedented needs, and those needs necessitate unprecedented measures to address them. So in an effort to keep kids first, we propose using $5 million out of fund balance for recurring expenditures in FY '25. We also propose assigning $15 million in fund balance to cover those same recurring expenditures in fiscal year '26 through '28, right? So that means we will set aside and designate $15 million for this specific purpose to cover those expenditures for those three additional years. But at the same time, even though we had that $15 million set aside, at the same time, we will reserve one-fourth of that amount, which is $1,250,000, in new general fund revenue each year over the course of four years, so that at the end of that time, we will have all of those positions and programs that were implemented in the fiscal year '25 budget completely covered. So with the $22.1 million funding from state and local revenue and the use of $5 million in fund balance, that will enable us to fund 103.6 positions, which is a, a decrease from the 141.6 in our initial budget presented at first reading. And I remind you that 60 positions are currently funded through ESAR. So those, so those staff members are currently employed through the district. That additional funding will allow us to address those recommendations as they have presented, been presented or shared with administration by the board. And overall, it will allow us to reduce the unfunded needs from that initial first read budget from 7.1 to 2.2 million dollars with a zero mil increase. So the next few slides, they incorporate, again, that same thing, that 22.1 million plus the $5 million in fund balance to arrive at the $27.1 million in revenue that we can use to fund the needs of the district. The first nine didn't change. The line changed, but the first nine items did not change. And then the last slide, it will show you the, the budget priorities that will not be able to be funded with this revenue. And we listened to the board's recommendations, and we removed some of the items that were addressed in previous meetings. And I would draw your attention briefly to the CPR and AED training related to compliance. That legislation didn't pass this session, so that's why we removed it from the, from the proposed FY '25 budget. And we're also proposing to use our 8% funding for the storm water maintenance. Mr. Chair, I'm available. There are any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Ms. Elkin Scott.
First, I want to say thank you for the new proposal. I really like what I see, and I can tell that you guys really came together and worked, and you listened to what we suggest that you guys add to that. Just one question. I recall several years ago, there were two county council members who always had an issue with us having too much money in our fund balance. And they would always say that Richland 2 is a rich district. You carry too much money. So my question would be, is there a state requirement of how much money you should carry over? Because that was always their question and their concerns, that we had too much in there. So what is the state requirement for that?
So the state requires that we maintain at least one month of expenditures in fund balance, right? GFOA best practices, and then kind of what rating agencies look at is at least two months worth of expenditure.
So with that, really, what you're proposing should not really hurt the budget at all. We should be able to approve this when that time comes and move forward because we're still in line with what the state is requesting without getting any mileage.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
I really wish this had come first. But that's okay. It doesn't matter. It's here now, and I'm excited and ready to approve it. So I look forward to that time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
So before, when we had requested for the storm water maintenance, we were advised that it was not going to be covered. So am I clear in hearing you saying that it will be covered by the 8% that we just approved?
The, the, so, so the largest portion of it is non-recurring? So that's the piece that will be covered by the 8% that will take care of FY '25. We may be before you in FY '26 with the small reoccurring portion.
Okay. And then my other question is related to the compensation for the study. How often are we going to, going forward, make sure that we are looking at what industry standards are so that we're not years behind with paying our employees?
According to our consultants, best practice is to do this every three to five years.
Okay. And then the other question that I have, I'm really excited to hear that our athletic department will be getting stipends, but I also want to make sure that we are not giving money equally. Because if I have four swim students on my team at one high school, and I only have two, there is not a need for somebody that has two to have an assistant coach. That is something that I actually heard from, from an athletic director. So I want to make sure that when we're talking about distributing the money to our, for the athletic compensation, and I know that it was also including positions, that we are not just giving positions to everybody that may not need it. You may have one school that doesn't have any students that need, that have a swim coach. And so I want to make sure that we're not allocating money where it's not needed. So is that something that we are going to take into consideration before we just start distributing money?
Yes, Ms. Washington. Even though the money is allocated, does not mean the money has to be spent. So while we may have the position, we do need to look at the needs of the individual schools, and based upon the needs, then we will address those needs.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, but, so guest services is on here. It's almost a half a million dollars. What are we doing internally to not have to outsource? Because I understand the benefits of outsourcing. It does allow and alleviate some things, but are we listening to the concerns from guest teachers and from schools to be able to say, hey, maybe we don't need to spend a half a million dollars and outsource this to a temp agency? Maybe these are corrective actions that we can take in-house to be able to save because that's almost a half a million dollars? So is that something that we are considering?
Yes, I'll ask Dr. Foster to come up and address that.
Good evening, Mr. Trapp and Dr. Moore and fellow board members. Ms. Washington, just to, so that you can have a clear understanding of what we're asking with our guest teacher services. So currently, we house the guest teacher services in-house, and we have approximately 200, 250 guest teachers. And so the capacity of what we're asking is, and based on our dialogue and conversations with teachers and with administrators, the need is, is great. And so what we are asking is to be able to contract with a contractor that will have more capacity and be able to have, be able to get out there and really work and recruit in that effort. And the vendors that have come to us have really talked about incentives and other programs that they would offer to our guest teachers that we're not able to offer in-house. And so when we look at this additional funds that are asked for guest teachers, that's to cover any increase. So we have budgeted money that's set aside now, and that money will be transferred to accounts payable so that it will be covering that. And this additional is to cover just any other cost. So we may have expected costs because we're expecting to have more of a fill rate. So if we're operating at a 60% fill rate now, and if we go up to an 80% fill rate by using a contracted services provider, that's going to increase that cost, and that's why that's in there. So our hope is, is that with the contracted service provider and the references that we've checked and, and working with during the RFP process, is that they have seen an increase in their service providers, even those that were housed in-house, and then transferring it to those contracted services, they've seen an increase there. So our hope is, is that we'll have, one, better quality services from our providers, as well as more incentives and compensation for our compensation, meaning that they won't be on our pay structure, they'll be paid on a more of a weekly pay structure. And so that that's something that our guest teachers like, is more, more frequent pay as well. So it's benefits to moving towards that.
And it's not like a multi-year contract? This is going to be year by year?
It's a one-year agreement with the option to extend to four. So we would evaluate it after the first year to make sure that this is the best opportunity for the district.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Scott, for asking that question about the fund balance, because that was on my list as well.
And, and Ms. Washington, one of these, the topics that have come out of our working conditions is around fill rates. And the fact that when teachers are out and we don't have enough guest teachers to fill it, then students will be sprinkled at the elementary and middle level, and then at the high school level, the teachers are having to cover, which takes away time from their planning periods, which is increasing the workload on them, you know, outside of that time. So this is one of the ways that we're looking to address that concern that's been raised through the working conditions.
Okay.
Surveys.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add more to the conversation that Mrs. Washington proposed. Just speaking with colleagues in other school districts, I guess my question would be, what more do they have to offer than what we're already offering them? And one concern, just a colleague shared with me, when you source this out, you're giving teachers, guest teachers, more options. And all I've heard from many people is that Richland 2 does not pay well. So if that's the case, and we source this out, and that company has four or five other school districts, which they do, because I have retired teacher friends who sub as guest teachers, how do we know we're really going to get the bang for our buck? Because I'm just going to throw out something for an example. Let's say we have positions, and this guest teacher and this company that we're sourced out to, they source out to Kershaw, Lex 5, Richland 2, Richland 1, and Fairfield. So how can you reassure us that this company is really going to provide what we need because these guest teachers have options? And they can look at the school district that provides the most money, which according to many, is not Richland 2. So if that's the case, what's going to make them come to Richland 2 and provide more than what we're already offering? And then we can take that $1 million-plus dollars and give to this classified staff that's, that's sitting here, or some reading programs, or some other programs. I'm just throwing that out.
So good question, Dr. Elkin Scott. I think one of the things that we have to really take in consideration is what Dr. Moore talked about, is that unfortunately, right now, our HR department does not have the capacity to be able to do this work effectively. And so we had two people that were working, but they're managing the recruiting efforts as well as the access of trying to get everybody processed. So really, the efficiency of trying to get more guest teachers in, because this is a position that turns over frequently, as you would want it to turn over, where you may, they may go out and recruit and hire 10. They may work for two weeks as a, as a guest teacher, and then they're being hired on full-time. So you've got to keep that cycle going. And so what we are hoping is that having a recruiting, having a team that will come in and be focused, that's their primary focus, is focusing on this temporary employment staff thing that we need to meet this, and so that we would be able to keep that going. And they would be, that will be their primary focus. So our team is not working on that in-house. And also, we're hoping that it will increase the number of people that we have, so that it would take some of the pressure off of our staff. So if you're looking at what our staff is doing, just as they talked about with our classified staff, we have classified staff members who have other assignments, but because there's no guest teacher in the classroom, they're having to go and do that work, which means that someone is not doing the reading intervention work or the math intervention work, or either the front office work because they're having to cover a classroom. Or a teacher's not getting her planning, his or her planning time because they're having to cover a classroom for that planning time. And of course, they're being compensated, the teachers are being compensated for that at an additional rate. So we're hoping that, trying to utilize some of the funds that we have, that we would have more opportunity to at least try to see if this is going to increase our fill rate. Because if we're looking at 100 teachers out of a school, out of, in our district in one day, that's not there, and we're only able to fill 60% of that, that means we have 40 classrooms that are not. And we're only able to fill 60% of that, that means we have 40 classrooms that are not covered. But if we can increase that fill rate to 85, 90, if we have that same 100 classrooms, we're only going to have 15 classrooms that are not covered. And that's our goal for the first year, was trying to just get us to 85. Trying to get us somewhere better than we are right now. So our overall hope is, is that utilizing a contracted service provider is that their resources would be, that they would utilize their resources to be able to help us in those areas. Compensation is a concern, and Ms. Williams and I go back and forth about compensation. But right now, where we are, the agreement is that we can't afford to increase the compensation for the guest teachers. So what we will be utilizing, what we've asked for in the RFPs is that, what ways would you try to, would you use to increase our guest teacher pool? And they talked about incentives. They talked about on those high-volume days that they would do incentives. Like they may say, we will give you, if you come in, that, that day, that guest teacher gets an additional $25 as some of the incentive options, things that we are not able to do or have not tried. I won't say we're not able to do them, but have not implemented as a district because of, we just haven't. But those are things that they're able to do that have seemed to be beneficial. And yes, the districts that you looked at right now in, in our area, the only districts that are our size that are, that have their guest teachers in-house would be Richland One and Richland Two. The other districts have all outsourced with better, in, better results than what we are getting with our current practices.
Thank you for that, but I'm not sure if my question was answered. That, that was a lot, but I'm not sure if you fully answered my question. So I, I would like to hear more about what will they do more that we can't do? I mean, you, you said a little bit of that, and those incentives, are they coming from the company and not from us?
Yes, they would be, they would be incentives that they would, that they would generate. So remember, the way that, that they're compensated is based on the fill rate. So the more people that they get in, they, they would have a higher fill rate. And then that means that they would be paid off, they would see a, a increased revenue. So they're going to be working, trying to get more people in our, in our classrooms. And so that's where some of the incentives are. The things that they've talked about would be incentives for our teachers, making sure that there's flexibility in, in what, the ways that they compensate teachers. That's meaning like the weekly compensation.
Right, but again, my question is, if they have four or five other school districts to choose from, have we done our homework to see what the incentives are for the other school districts that will put Richland Two at the top of the list to say, you know what? All these other school districts are offering this, but Richland Two is offering that, and that's where I want to go?
It's going to be compensation. I mean, that's, I mean, basically what you're looking at, most people are looking for, compensation is not the only thing that people are looking for. But in that type of role, that is one of the things that they're looking for. Because that role requires that I am available at, when I, when needed. I could be called at 6:00 in the morning and have to go accept a, a position at that time. So you want to make sure that you're being compensated. But the one thing that we know that we have to do is that we have to look at another alternative than what we currently have. And so if we're looking at wanting to provide and address the concerns that have been shared by our teachers as well as our support staff, this is a working condition area that they feel like we've got to address because it's adding more pressure to them in the classrooms by adding additional students to their classroom as well as, as well as having them to use other resources to cover it, classified staff members to cover it, or by utilizing teacher planning time. So our hope is, is that the vendor that we decided to, that we select to go with will work with us to make sure that they are meeting those things. And the proposals that we received, they all talked about. We will make sure that we know that on these high-volume days, that we have incentives for those individuals. We'll also make sure that we are providing them with educational opportunities that we may not be able to provide because we don't offer tuition reimbursement or we don't help with trying to get extra degree, I mean, a degree for those. So those are things that they would help with as well as working with them if there was a need for them to want to, of course, working with us as an employer, if they want to get the pair pro posi, the pair pro taken care of. So providing them with professional learning opportunities as well.
Okay, and I'll just share this with Dr. Moore. I would like to see something sent to us within 90 days to see how this company, the progress of 90 days, what it looks like, the vacancies we have and the guest teachers that have come in. So I'd like to have a 90-day report once we start, just to compare to what we're doing. And then with the money, you said that it's a one-year contract, correct?
It is.
And exactly how much is that for that one year?
So the amount of money that has been allocated for it, this is an additional amount here. But for guest teachers, Ms. Williams, I don't know. We have a 4, 4 and 1/2 million budgeted for our current guest teacher services throughout the district.
So for this contract with this company, what is the cost of that for this one year? I know what we have budgeted, but how much are they expecting from us?
So remember, it would be an up-charge based on the amount of employees that they bring in. So when we're looking at the, the amount, the amount is based on the fill rate. So we have 4 and 1/2 million dollars with this, before that. So we have roughly $5 million set aside for guest teacher services.
Right, you're still not answering my question. I know what we have set aside, and maybe Dr. Moore needs to answer this. I know what we have set aside. My question is, once again, what is the cost? What is the estimate that we're looking at? Let's say, on an average, we have 160 teachers out per day. I'm just throwing that out. Then what would be the cost? That's what I, I need to know numbers, not what we have set aside.
So I don't think we can estimate that, but let's say if we have, let's say that on that given day, if there, if the cost for having the guest teachers in, in the classroom, I'm going to use, I'm going to use $100,000 just as, on a high-volume day, $100,000, that is what they are, the cost for them to have 160 guest teachers in our building.
Okay.
Then they're going to get a percentage of that increase of, that's going to be their up-charge, is that correct? Percentage markup, thank you, percentage markup. So the percentage markup could be 30%. I'll just, you start there. So that means that they will get 30% of $100,000 for that day. So I can't give you the amount that it's going to cost us to have it for the whole year. But the overall thing is trying to increase our fill rate. So if we increase our fill rate, that means that they're going to be able to generate more revenue from the district.
Okay, I'm not going to take up any more time. I'm going to say this, and I promise I'm done. But I'm, I'm just thinking, I remember when we used to pay teachers and pay teacher assistants to go in and fill the role, and they get paid. I'm pretty sure some of them would probably love to do that and make that extra money, which would be like a part-time job rather than giving, sourcing it out to someone. But I'll stop right there because people, we don't want to be here all night, and we'll talk about that another time. But thank you.
But Dr. Scott, we are doing that now, and teachers are helping and supporting. But that's been going on for consistently for the last three years. And a lot of our teachers are telling us that that is one of the reasons as to why they're making a decision to leave, or they're saying, what are you going to do to help that? Because that is a teacher working condition that is taking a toll on them. First year, it was fine. Second year, okay. Now we're in the third and fourth year, they're like, what are you going to do?
And the teachers are paid, and so are the, the teacher assistants that are working. They, they do receive additional compensation, but they're, they're tired.
Dr. Moore, just to clarify that, the teachers, the teachers receive. And the, the classified staff will only receive if they stay over to complete any additional tasks that they are responsible for.
Ms. Washington, were you, was there anything else you needed? All right, let's, let's go to Ms. Porter, and then Ms. McFadden.
Okay, thank you. I want to say thank you for listening to us. It's very clear that our, our voices were heard, and you listened carefully into what we wanted to prioritize, and the staff as well when they were surveyed. Second, I just wanted to share this about the guest teachers as some feedback that I've heard from teachers. We have a lot of teachers getting ready to retire at 28 mark, 28-year mark. And some have voiced the concern of the, it being outsourced as, their, their concern is, would they get more, would they get paid more on the old way of getting paid as a guest teacher, as a retired teacher versus going with this company? And if there is a separate plan for teachers who are retiring from Richland Two, who choose to be a sub, if they don't want to be employed by the third party and would rather be employed by Richland Two, if there's something special that we can offer them to, to stay within district, because they're concerned that they'll get paid less going to the third-party company than with us. So just want to put that out there, that that has come to me a couple of times. And some of them are deciding on whether or not it's a bigger bang for their buck if they should retire or not because they want that freedom of being able to work less days in a week or, you know, be able to take a week off to help with their grandchildren and so forth. And I have another one, but go ahead.
Can I just answer that question for you? So our current practice is probably not our best practice for certified guest teachers because we are paying them day one at their teacher daily rate. And so we're probably the only district that was doing that, and it still did not yield us a huge volume.
Okay.
Okay, because remember, most of those teachers are still under the earnings limitation. And if they're not working in a classroom that they are designated for like every day, then they don't get compensated. They don't, they still have to meet that $10,000 threshold. Once they meet that, once they go over the earnings limitation, then they're not eligible for retirement. So most of them only would work up to that point, which would be, in some cases, 20 days at the most, at the most. So most of them would not work anymore after that unless they were doing a long-term. Transitioning to the, all of our guest teachers to a third-party vendor, although we're not paying teachers the daily rate of pay day one, after day 10, if they're in a long-term assignment, they still will earn their teacher daily rate. And then at that time, they will have other incentives for not, that will not, that they don't have the currently, that they're currently responsible for now, working through the district.
Okay.
So we, we definitely feel like it would be a,
Benefit.
A better for us to be able to move all of them to that. And we can definitely sit down and talk to individuals if they want to know the benefits as to why. But any teachers that are retired, it would be, once they do, if they're doing a long-term assignment, which we will hope most of them would be doing long-term assignments, they still will have a, a benefit of doing that through the third, third-party.
Okay, thank you for that. And the other one was, I, looking at this list and looking at which things were crossed off, if, and I see that you prioritize staff here. Thank you for that. There was one item that is a staff item. And I'm hoping that just because it's not worded the same way as all the things in numbers 1 through 29, if you had extra funds, because I know we don't know yet with the state budget and everything else, that you would prioritize on that list of things that are crossed off. Here I am trying to get one more, is the FTEs to address inequities in school staff. So that one, seeing it at the bottom, I just, I didn't like that. I would love for it to be at the top, but just so that if you have extra funds and things work out, being that we prioritize staff, that it would still be included, and you could still use those funds to help with some of the inequities.
That's correct. We have it listed in number 18.
Okay.
But it's, it's, it's partially funded, but if we had more, we would love to increase, increase that amount.
Okay, and I think that also goes along with what Ms. Washington was saying about the, the need versus us paying based on need. And I'm hoping that you would also not only look at athletic stipends with that same mindset, but also with our social workers and our school psychologists. Because there are some schools that have more need in that department. And I would just hope that you would consider that as well. Thank you.
All right, Ms. McFadden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Williams, I want to say thank you so much. When I spoke with Dr. Moore, this is exactly what I was looking for because we got 1 through 29 covered with only $5 million out of our general fund. And we still have enough money left over to fund three more years. And I knew that, and I'm glad that you all were able to see and get this approved. So everybody that got approved for something on here, it's actually, should the board vote to accept this, they have a chance at getting everything. I mean, everything that we've talked about, from athletic stipend, everyone that came in. And this is the type of budget that I think the board was looking for. So thank you so much for your efforts. I know that it may have been stressful and strenuous, you know, but you did it. And I applaud you and your team for that because you've done something that hasn't really been done in the past like that, which was provide us every single thing that we wanted and needed. And the things that we didn't want or didn't need, it's not on there. And I was concerned about the CPR AED. I was like, why is that crossed off? But you addressed that as soon as you came in. So I applaud your staff, and that's why we have, we have a great team as far as the people who are in your department now. And I thank you for stepping into this role and taking it on and dealing with it and handling all of it. And I just want to say I appreciate it, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Nash has one item, and then what Ms. Agostini has for floor.
I was just going to say, thank you all for all the hard work. One of the things, you know, we were really concerned about is our citizens and adding another tax. And especially hearing nationally and as also locally, that there are also other possible taxes that are going to be imposed. I'm just glad that we're not going to have the extra weight of this. And thank you guys for working with us. It's really important, and I hope that the public sees that the hard work that everybody has done here, including the board and, and just everybody working together and in a very cohesive manner to solve a problem that these kind of things don't start, you know, in one year. We're, we're solving a significant amount of the issues in one year. And that's, that's to be committed to all of you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and just to be clear, when we were talking about how much we have to have in the fund balance, our policy says it's two months, policy DB. How much do we have in the fund balance right now? Do we know that?
For FY '24, for the current, current year, we're projecting at the end of this fiscal year to have about 3.8 months or about 117. Don't, I hate throwing out numbers that I don't have right in front of me, I'm sorry. But somewhere thereabout, somewhere thereabout.
About how much do we have right now? Because you're saying at the end of the fiscal year.
Next month, at the end of next month.
Okay. What do we have right now?
I don't have that number.
Oh, you don't?
I don't have that number for the end of.
What's currently in there? I was just curious.
The end of May, you mean the end of May? Or you mean at the end of the last fiscal year? Which one, I'm sorry. Want to make sure I answer appropriately.
My questions are, one, today, how much do we have? And how much then do we expect to have after June of 2024?
And so the number that I gave you, the 117, that's the number that we anticipate having after June. Again, it's purely an estimate.
Right.
Because we may get more revenue than we anticipate, and expenditures may shake out a different way. But that's the current estimate at the end of June.
Okay.
And when you say to date, you mean, May 21st? I don't know that.
Okay, well, I sort of, I'm wondering how much we're expecting. Like, is it $10 million that's going to be deposited into our general fund? You know?
That, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing the math with the change right now. So the change between the end of last fiscal year was 111, right, 111. And so we're anticipating being at 117.
Okay, about 6 million.
So the $6 million change.
Okay, that's all right.
That was the question, I apologize.
That's good, we got the answer. Thank you so much. And so I'm looking at the, the proposal for $15 million in fund balance to fully cover those recurring expenditures for, from 2026 to 2028. So this board is going to be asked to vote on that as well when we approve this budget? That we are going to commit to those funds for the following years?
Yes, ma'am. So assign it, just to designate it, yes, ma'am, for those purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McFadden.
I just want to be clear that the $15 million, it's going to, it's going to be broke down into five, three different payments of $5 million. So it's not going to be $15 million this week. It's just this budget season, it's going to say that, because the plan that, that has been put in place, the two, three-year plan, it's going to say that we're going to vote for $5 million this year. And every year, we're going to allocate and vote for $5 million each year to cover this.
So what we're doing, yes, ma'am, right? So we're taking of that 20 million, we've taken 5 million, and we're putting it into operations, right? So that would be a part of our operational budget for FY '25. But at the same time, what we're saying is you would go ahead and you would assign that other $15 million go ahead and you would assign that other $15 million to be used in $5 million increments over the next three years after FY25.
So we'll actually have that money sitting in our account?
Sitting aside, set aside for that, yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
We will now move to new business. No action requested. All right, item 10.1. The agenda item of this section is a policy, policy revision, proposal for policy GCC slash GDC, employee, employee leaves and absences. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will ask Dr. Marshall Lynn Franklin, our Deputy Superintendent, to present to the board. Dr. Franklin has elected to pass that baton on to Dr. Franklin Foster to do the presentation.
Yeah, Franklin II, not Franklin I. Board members, Ms., thank you again for allowing us to come tonight. We do have four policies that we would like to bring forth to you. And again, this is based on our, based on feedback that we receive from our employees regarding our current policies. So we have two, three policy revisions that we'd like to bring forth to you for your consideration, and then, of course, the addition of the voluntary sick leave bank policy. And I'm fortunate that I have people on my team that are much smarter than I am. So tonight, I'm going to ask Stephanie Frederick to come up and share with you the information regarding these four policies that we're asking for changes to, to help us with addressing some concerns that our employees have shared, as well as making sure that we're providing them with opportunities to help them in the, in time of need as well. So Stephanie?
Good evening, Dr. Moore, Mr. Trapp, and distinguished board members. Thank you for allowing me to join you tonight to share some proposed changes for your consideration. Talk about policy GCC, GDC, employee leaves and absences first. It's the one that we're proposing several changes within the policy. Just to give you a little background, the current policy allows employees, based on the number of days they work each school year, to accrue sick leave. And sick leave can be used for their own illness or the illness of eligible family members. And we expand the definition of illness to include injury and doctor's appointments. But other than that, it's very restrictive. That is the intent of the leave. We realize that sometimes things arise that are outside of illness, and so we do have some caveats for them to turn some of those days into personal leave. For employees with less than five years, they can use three days for personal reasons. If they've been here five consecutive years, it changes to six. And so one of the big things we're proposing is trying to broaden that a little bit. Due to interactions with our employees, their feedback, looking at market trends, private sector, other school districts, and knowing that we have an ever-changing workforce that we're trying to embrace as we try to attract and retain skilled workforce, we are wanting to change the current accrual to be considered paid time off, or PTO. It would only be the current year's accrual, so employees would be able to use that for illness, just like they do now, but also for other reasons that are important to them and their family. At the end of the fiscal year, any unused PTO would roll into an accumulated sick leave balance, just like it does now, and those days would accrue up to a maximum of 90. That way, that just gives more discretion to the individual employees. One of the other things that we want to do is change the, what we consider sick leave to be used for. Currently, sick leave can be used only for the employee, their spouse, a parent, or a child, and we define it as immediate family. Well, under our bereavement portion of the policy, we define immediate family differently. It's a little bit broader. So we're trying to give that same consideration to sick leave and add grandparents, grandchildren, and siblings so that they can use their sick leave. We've had a number of cases recently of employees needing to be out with terminal siblings who had no other family members. It's very, excuse me, difficult in our position to say, no, you can't use your leave for that. So we're just trying to be more consistent. Our current policy states that leave is accrued, and it can be advanced up to the current year amount. Our current practice has been, for the last 14 years or so, is that we actually advance it at the beginning of the year. We did that when we changed software systems and to be able to administer the sick versus the personal, and to be able to make sure we allocated those days properly, we advanced all of that leave at the beginning. We are wanting to remove that piece of the policy so that employees actually accrue leave per month, as the board policy was originally intended. It kind of mitigates some abuse of leave and people using their leave and then resigning immediately and potentially being overpaid. So just trying to be more prudent with our tax dollars. In our policy, we also have a caveat called annual leave, and it's to reward long-term service. Employees who are with us for 15 years of consecutive credible service, any excess sick leave over 45 days is converted to annual leave, gives them more freedom, also helps them in retirement calculations depending on their membership date. We are actually proposing to lessen that to 10 days. Again, we're trying, I mean, 10 years, not 10 days. We're trying to retain staff, and we see that year seven, we tend to lose a lot of teachers. So if they think that 10 years is kind of an incentive for them, it makes them maybe stick around a few more years. So that's our, another proposal. And then lastly, in this policy, under our bereavement, Richland Two is very generous. We're one of the few districts that gives paid bereavement leave to our employees. Our current policy gives three days for immediate family members and one day for extended family. But there are provisions in there that say that the superintendent or his or her designee, which is currently how we do it with principals, they can extend that leave. They can double each category. That's really not the intent of the policy. The intent was to do the three or one, but we had that caveat in for special instances. But what we're seeing is that principals, supervisors, they're not applying it in a consistent manner. They're just approving the days with no explanation, and so we're trying to remove that. We understand employees may need to be out longer, but they would just use their own PTO in those cases. I think I covered all the changes. It's a lot in that policy.
All right, thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I just want to say, thank you for the changes because it is much needed. I think about many, many years ago, when Vanessa Frazier and I were working together at Ridgeview High School, and I was raised by my grandmother. And when she passed, I was not able to get those extra days as her servant as my mom, so I was very disappointed about that. But God is still good. It worked out. And also, I think about my mom, when my mom retired from Richland School District One, and I was also a teacher at the time in Richland School District One, and she was cafeteria worker. And my mom never, never, ever, ever missed work. So when she was able to retire, she had 119 days. And at that time, you could pass those days on to family members. Well, let me just tell you, I enjoyed the 119 days. And she was just so upset with me because I used them, and I used them, and I used them. And if I was on my way to work and broken there, I'm sick. No, don't go do that. It's a joke. But anyway, so I'm glad to see that we're doing something. Thank you, Mom, for those 119 days.
Ms. McFadden.
I would, I would say that I was quite surprised to know that you're only awarded one day of vacation and three days of bereavement. I know if my husband or one of my children passed away, I'm not coming back in three days. You can forget it. I mean, I would literally leave my job for that. And PTO days, I know that they add up. So that's different. You have your bereavement, you have your sick, and you have your PTO.
Yes.
Okay, so whenever they're documenting, you're saying the principals are documenting, instead of just saying three days for bereavement, they're going to put three days for bereavement, and then the rest of it has to be the PTO.
Right.
What if they don't have PTO?
Well, a lot of those cases, obviously, an employee can go to their doctor and say that they're grieving and they're just not able to perform the essential function of their job, and they'd be allowed to use sick leave in that case.
So they would be able to use the sick leave from the sick leave bank for that?
Not the, not the proposal that we're going to talk about, but their own sick leave. So employees are technically not, it's not that sick leave is going away. It's just that the current year accrual would be PTO, but at the end of the year, if they don't use them, and we encourage our employees to please save your days. Don't just burn them because you have them. You want to use them in case you have an emergency, you have an illness. So they roll over into a sick leave balance. And then the next year, if they didn't use all their days, they have sick leave, and then their current accrual is PTO.
So the bank is just for individuals? So if some, like what she said, what Dr. Scott said, if I have sick leave, it goes into a bank. It's only my bank. I can't share that with my other employees.
That is correct.
So the young lady that was up here a moment ago, she was saying that one of her colleagues has cancer. She doesn't have any more PTO. She's out of everything. They can't have a voluntary, put my sick leave in here.
Well, we're going to talk about 10.4 in just a second, about a sick leave bank that we are proposing.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Sorry.
All right, any, any other questions, board members? All right, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to talk about the next two policies together.
Okay, well, I will introduce.
Oh, okay.
All right, our next policy revision is for policy GDC, administrative staff vacations and holidays. Dr. Moore?
You can talk about it now.
Okay, awesome. So policy GCD is about administrative staff vacation and holidays. It pertains to our year-round staff that are, we call them 245-day employees. We are proposing to make a change to the vacation that they accrue, which is a separate bank of time from what I've already talked about. They currently accrue .8334 of one day each month, and we're proposing to change that to one day per month. So the total per school year would be 12 instead of 10. We are also proposing that they can roll over those days up to a maximum of 24. And our practice has always been to reimburse at retirement or separation any unused vacation, but it wasn't actually in the board policy. So we added that language. It's a short and sweet one.
Any questions?
All right, we'll move to the next policy. This is policy, a revision for policy GDD, support staff vacations and holidays.
Okay, this is going to be simple. It's identical to the last one. We just had it broken, broken out for administration, and then this one is the same verbiage, but it's for support staff.
All right, board members, are there any questions? All right, we will move to the last policy revision. This is policy, this is a policy for voluntary sick leave, a sick leave bank.
Right. We do not currently have a board policy. Just as a matter of practice, we have had a employee-sponsored voluntary sick leave bank for, I know, at least 25 years. I've been here 23 of those. But we've never established an actual board policy. And part of what the public participation talked about, we're trying to make it more wide-known, employees to know about it, to make it official, and to help those employees that are in, having catastrophic situations. So it is a voluntary bank. Employees are going to be given the option to join if they wish to. We are proposing that we have an annual open enrollment period during our same insurance enrollment as a way to kind of reach employees, because what we're hearing is that they don't know that it exists because they get inundated with so many emails and posts, and they're missing the opportunity to enroll until they need it, and then it's too late. So by adding it to our insurance open enrollment, we make those meetings mandatory. We meet with every employee, so that way they really are getting introduced to it to know. But the sick leave bank is a bank that is designed to help employees who have catastrophic personal illnesses or injuries, and they've exhausted all their leave to give them some additional time. Employees, in order to be eligible to join, they have to have completed one full year of service, and they have to have at least one day available because that's what they donate to join the bank. Employees will only be asked to donate additional leave if or when the bank were to go dry. In the history of it, that has never happened. And because it's voluntary, if that were to happen, they would be given the option to withdraw their membership if they did not want to donate additional days. We've tried to pay really special attention to defining what catastrophic means and to making sure that the committee includes a nurse, either a school nurse or our coordinator of health services, to help with the decision-making, because it's comprised of a committee who would then review requests or decide if the days would be granted or not.
All right, board members, any questions related to this proposed policy? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item will be a request to change the scheduled date of the June 11th board meeting. Would anyone, or board members, would you like to share your thoughts on a potential date to change that to?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Nash?
I have no problem changing the date. I just will not be able to be there on the 4th because I already have plans for that date.
Mr. Chair, I move to reschedule the June 11th regular board meeting to June 4th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott and seconded by Mrs. Agostini to change the date of the June 11th board meeting to June 4th. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. or Dr.
The reason why we want to do this, we all know that June 11th is the primary, and we hope and pray that you guys get out and vote. So we want to make sure that we have flexibility in that. So that's why we want to move it from June 4th, I'm sorry, from June 11 to June 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I most likely will not be able to be here that day. So, and I'm not sure about Dr. Scott's commitments, but everybody else would have to be here in order to have the meeting, to have a quorum.
Are you referring to the 11th or the 4th?
Excuse me. I'm, well, yes, I want to change it to the 4th because of my concerns on June 11. Thank you for letting me clarify.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, is that correct, Dr. Elkin Scott?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now take a look at the draft agenda for the next board meeting. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our next board meeting will be June the 4th. We will start at 5:30 PM, move into executive session, start with the call to order, approval of the agenda, and then move into executive session. During executive session, we will talk about student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, receipt of legal advice concerning an insurance matter, and release back to public session at 6:30 PM. We will then have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by our consent agenda, which will include the approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from previous meeting, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. Then we'll move to public participation. Upon conclusion of public participation, we'll have voting on executive session items, which would include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, and employment recommendations and certified releases, receipt of legal advice on an insurance matter, and any as-needed items that were discussed during executive session. Then we'll move to Section 8, which is unfinished business, action requested. It will be the second reading of policy revision, policy GCC slash GDC, which is employee leave and absences, policy revision, policy GCD, administrative staff vacations and holidays, policy revision proposal, policy GDD, support staff vacations and holidays, and policy proposal, voluntary sick leave bank. We'll then move to new business, no action requested. We'll look at the third quarter financial report, as well as a legislative committee update, followed by a review of the draft agenda for the June 25th, 2024 regular scheduled board meeting. As needed, public, a second public participation, executive session, and voting on executive session items. We'll conclude with board and superintendent comments, and then adjournment.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next agenda or to a future agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McFadden?
Um, we have received a request from Richland County Council for us to select someone for the County Board of Assessments and Appeals. We need to make a decision on that, so I'd like to add that to the agenda for June 4th.
All right, thank you.
I move that we add a vote for County Board of Assessment Appeal Deputy to the June 4th, 2024 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Washington to add to the agenda. All right, if that's, if that is correct, board members, please vote. Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Is there any other items we would like to see added to this agenda or future agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington?
Um, so there has been some discussion. We need some clarification. I think we're clear on what our policy says, but there's some discussion about how board members should be compensated based on meetings. And so I don't know if we need to drag this out into a long meeting or a discussion, but we need some answers on, we know what the policy says because it clearly defines the type of meetings, but, so I don't know, do you all want to add that as a discussion at the next board meeting? Or do we want to have administration reach out to the board? What, what would be?
Follow the policy.
It, it might be something we should consider doing at our next workshop or something.
Okay, so it's going to be the policy BE. My concern is because we're already having meetings, that we don't want to continue. If we're paying people incorrectly, then we need to, we need to fix that. And so that's the concern.
Mr. Chair, can I just add to that?
Yes, Ms., Dr.?
I'm really not sure why we need to have a meeting. The policy states clearly that we only get paid for board meetings and special call board meetings. So if we're getting paid for committee meetings and agenda meetings, we know we shouldn't have. So if we've done that, we just make arrangements with the, you know, the people and pay the money back, but I don't know why we would have a meeting for that when the policy clearly states how we're paid.
So can we make, can we please have administration? Because this is the second time that it has been brought up. I would like to make a request for administration to get back to the board so that everybody is clear on how that pay is supposed to be structured for board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else we would like to add to this or a future agenda? All right, we'll move to item 14, Executive Session Continued. I please have a motion recess public session and reconvene in executive session for the purpose of discussing a contractual matter regarding food service as well as a personal matter related to the superintendent's evaluation.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation and contractual matter regarding food services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? All right, let me restate the motion so we can hand vote. We have made a motion to move into executive session to discuss a contractual matter regarding food service as well as personal matter related to superintendent's evaluation. All those that want to vote affirmative or the positive, please raise your right hand. All right, vote is seven yes, zero no. We are now moving to executive session. I have a motion to end the executive session.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
I move that we adjourned executive session at 9:56 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has made, made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any, is there any discussion? All right, is that correct on screen, Ms. Agostini?
It is.
All right, board members, please vote. The motion passes. I please have a motion pertaining to the contractual matter regarding food service.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I move to approve the recommendation by the selection committee for RFP 23-2429 Food Service Management Company and to proceed with the award and notification with the selected food service management company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Na, Mrs. Washington, is that correct on the screen? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move on to item 16, Board and Superintendent Comments. We'll start with Mrs. Agostini.
Well, gee, I wasn't ready for that. So, thank you for, thank you for all the people that came for public participation and congratulations to all of the people that were recognized tonight. It was great to see, you know, so many people being recognized. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Mrs. McFadden?
I want to say, this is the last board meeting before the end of school. I know teachers are working really hard, students are working really hard, staying up late studying for those exams. So you're going to do fine, get your rest, and know that it's not end-all here. You've got next year to keep going and do better and set those goals this summer for how you're going to improve and do better next year. I look forward to seeing everyone at the graduations and the award ceremonies. We're not going to be able to make all of them. A lot of them are on the same day at the same time. But congratulations to all of our students and to all of our teachers for a job well done and a great and fantastic school year all around. So y'all have a good night. Look forward to seeing you all at the celebrations.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Mrs. Washington?
Um, thank you so much to our CFO and her team for a great budget session and making those adjustments. Thanks to everyone who came out tonight. Shout out to the three students from Spring Valley who won the Project Jasmine grant on yesterday, or were awarded the Project Jasmine grant on yesterday. And also to the PCA Magnet Dance students, congratulations. You took your final bows and did your final jumps and toros tonight and we're super duper proud of you for all of the work that you are doing and will do in your future endeavors. Thanks for tuning in, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Nash?
Okay, I'm going to talk as fast as I possibly can. I want to say thank you to everybody, everybody who was in the room tonight. High five, air high five to everybody because everybody did a good job. For the people who were here, for the people who did the hard work on the budget, thank you all. Graduation is coming up, super excited for you teachers. Way to go for you students. Don't give them a hard time. It's the last few days of school and we will see all of you at graduation in all of our many different outfits. I am expecting Carla to do the tacos, or was that Nikki telling us how to make tacos again? So I'm excited for the games that will ensue as well as we wait for all the graduates to go by and all the people who were recognized tonight. Great job. We'll see you guys very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Na, thank you, Ms. Nash, uh, Mrs. Porter.
Thank you all for coming out tonight and sharing your voice. You were definitely heard and I also want to say congratulations to all those who received awards tonight and all of our students during this time of celebrations. I've thoroughly enjoyed the different honors, celebrations that we've had and ceremonies and so forth. Congratulations to our graduates of 2024 and for the rest of you who are still with us, stay focused and we look forward to another strong year in 2425. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Dr. Elkin Scott?
Yes, just want to say thank you to Dr. Whitney Prowl and her students, Sand Lapper, for giving us a great performance tonight. Kudos to the first-year teacher, you did an amazing job. Also, congratulations to all the recipients who receive awards, especially 40 years. Oh, my goodness. Congratulations to you guys. And also want to say congratulations to those students who received the scholarship from my cousin, Jasmine Gant. I do apologize, I was not able to be there, but my family was there to give out three scholarships on behalf of Jasmine, so I want to say thank you for that. And also thank you to CFO and her team. I really appreciate what you presented tonight and I think I'm ready to check my vote of positivity with that. And again, just thank you to all of the new administrators that will be coming in. We look forward to working with you guys and to our new graduates. I want to give you a quote, something very simple. If you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. And that's the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. quote. And I say that because as you begin to graduate and to move on, please remember what your parents taught you when you go to college, to military, to workplace, and stand for what you believe in, even if you have to be the only person standing. Thank you and you guys have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Elkin Scott. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, I want to congratulate our Richland two state champions in track and field for 5A State Champions Girls Track and Field, Blythewood High School, 5A State Champions Boys Track and Field, Spring Valley High School, 4A State Champions Girls and Boys Track and Field, Ridgeview High School. We will honor all of these talented teams at a later board meeting. Also want to recognize the inaugural Elementary Schools Honors Choir that performed on Saturday. It was awesome, as well as the 25th, 25th Annual Celebration of our Teen Parents Program. It was phenomenal. I, it was the first time I've been connected with that program and one of the testimonies just stood out to me. A young lady who had her baby when she was in eighth grade could not be there. She sent a video message. She was graduating from medical college that day. And that was because of the hard work of Erica and our team here and what they do for our students. So congratulations to those students and the support that we've provided in helping them achieve their goals. Graduation is next week and so congratulations to the class of 2024. I am very excited and looking forward to being on the stage for my first Richland two graduation and shaking each and every one of their hands. And then also our academic scholar night. So speaking of shaking hands, it was an honor to hand out medallions to our impressive senior scholars last Thursday at our academic scholars banquet. The list of accomplishments and accolades these seniors have earned is truly remarkable and is a true indicator that we are purpose-driven so that our students can be future-ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. The only thing I would like to really add to the meeting tonight is to say how forward I look to the graduation ceremonies we're going to have over the next week, starting Thursday night, where we have a graduation ceremony for our adult education students. And I really look forward to next week, taking two whole days off work to shake hundreds and hundreds of hands, but it is, it is genuinely an honor and a privilege to spend this time with our seniors and to see these wonderful students walk across the stage and realize that they're about to step out of whatever, whatever they're stepping into, they're leaving the most comfortable place they'll ever be in, at their parents' home. But I can assure you, what, what's ahead of you is going to be a lot more work, but we know you can do it and we're so, so thankful we can be a part of those ceremonies. Now with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the May 21st, 2024 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott to adjourn the meeting. Let's have a hand vote. All those in favor, right hand. It is unanimous, we are adjourned.